Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2022 Murrieta City Council Forum. My name is Patrick Ellis. I'm the President and CEO of the Murrieta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce and your host for this evening. I'd like to welcome the candidates and thank them for their participation tonight. We asked the public for questions to be submitted to the chamber. We received many questions, but we will not be able to get to all of them tonight, but we'll do our best. But I do want to thank those who did submit questions. It's very important to us to make sure that we have an active and engaged community. So I was very happy to see that we got quite a few questions. So this morning, I randomly selected names out of a hat. It was a bucket hat. I will make sure that everyone knows that for the order of opening statements for the candidates' questions, for the candidates' opening statements and for questions tonight. The order that came out of the hat were Ron Holliday first, Kristi White second, Cindy Warren third, and Jimmy Jackson. So each candidate is going to get two minutes in their opening statement. I am not checking texts. I'm fiddling with the timer, just so everyone knows. You'll see me doing timer and cards here during the process, just so you all know. So each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. After the opening statements, we'll begin with the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. At the conclusion of the questions, we'll have each candidate do a closing statement. We'll go in reverse order that we start the evening and tonight. So do any of the candidates have any other, any questions about the logistics of tonight? All right. Then we will go ahead and get started. And so our first candidate with the opening statement will be Mr. Ron Holliday.
Thank you, Patrick, for having this. We certainly appreciate it. A little background on myself. I was first introduced to this area in 1964 when my grandparents moved out here, spending summers with them, fell in love with the place, and decided at a young age that I would make this my home someday. I made that a reality in 1986 when I, when I first moved here and have lived in the area ever since, both in and around the, before the city had city limits and, and within the city for 18 years cumulatively and around the area for 36. Part of my background is I'm an investment advisor, got over 25 years of financial experience doing that. So I'm very adept with budgets and finances and forensic accounting and that kind of stuff. I got active in the city shortly after incorporation. I've been very active in the city steering committee, which I was the chairman of for several years. I've been the treasurer of the Murrieta Valley Foundation. I've been the treasurer of the Murrieta Chamber of Commerce for, for many years. I love serving my community. One of the things that, that drives me to this position is I love to be of service. That's, that's my goal. That's my campaign motto. It's an honor to serve. So I bring the, the experience and the longevity and the expertise that's needed to be on council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Kristi White.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Patrick Ellis and the chamberlain for holding this event. My name is Kristi White, and most of you know me. I'm excited to be running for my reelection to Murrieta City Council District Two. Everyone knows how much I care about our Murrieta community, residents and businesses. During the last four years, it's been my privilege to serve Murrieta and District Two as your city council member. I am the first woman to serve in 12 years and the second to serve in the first 30 years of cityhood. Because of a career opportunity in our valley and the rural small town feel, I moved here, I moved my entire household here 20 years ago, including my horse, and we all came from Pasadena. You'll benefit by reelecting me in a number of ways. First, as of January, I've actually owned my own home in District Two for 10 years. I know District Two. I walk three miles almost every day. And I talk and listen to people while I walk, and I'm very committed to Murrieta. Second, I'm one of the lucky people who gets to live, work, and play in Murrieta. You benefit because I'm continuing to work to make that same thing happen for everyone who lives in Murrieta and their families. Thirdly, you benefit for voting for me because as a businessperson for over 30 years, I've managed budgets, people, processes, logistics, contracts, negotiations, and operations. Also, by reelecting me, I bring a much-needed continuity to our council. Two are just ending their first two years on the dais. One has less than 11 months, and one will be a novice member this December. You benefit from my four years of council experience and three years of commission experience, and I bring institutional knowledge to balance out city staff's expertise. In closing, you benefit because I have the direct experience, dedication, and passion to be your district and advocate for all of Murrieta. I'm Kristi White for Murrieta District Two. Let me earn your vote.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we'll have Cindy Warren.
Well, good evening, everybody. I am Cindy Warren, and I am your current city council member for District Five. My husband and I moved to Murrieta in 2013, and shortly thereafter, he was diagnosed with cancer and passed away due to age and exposure while serving in Vietnam. We have one son named Kyle and an amazing granddaughter named Emma, who is the joy of my life. When John passed away, it left a very big hole in my life, but I made sure to get involved in my community, right with the Murrieta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce. I served in many leadership roles, and I was proud to be the gala chair for two years in a row, which was a wonderful experience to get to know our community at its highest peak. My family is everything to me, and I wouldn't be here today without their love and support. And I thank them for backing me in this campaign. When we moved to Murrieta, we moved because of safety and for the quality of life. I can only say I've never met a stranger here in Murrieta. It is such an honor to serve the citizens of this city that I love so dearly. My goal is to be part of the vision and the success and the growth of this thriving community while serving the residents of the city of Murrieta as a member of your city council. Serving on the city council is a positive way for me to give back to the community that has given me so much. I am a businesswoman and have owned my own business for 41 years, and it continues to thrive today. I am very involved with helping with veterans and our active military, and I'm proud to, to support them 100%. As a city council member and your engaged citizen, I conduct myself with integrity, honor, and character, and you have my full commitment, and I am true to those values in all that I do. Thank you, Chamber, for having this forum this evening.
Thank you. And last but not least, Jimmy.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Jimmy Jackson, and first I'd like to thank the chamber for inviting me to participate in this particular forum. Equally look forward to it, and I'd like to give you a little background about myself. I have lived in Murrieta for over 18 years. I am a champion for integrity, accountability, innovativeness, and teamwork as principles that I personally adhere to. I proudly served my country for six years in the United States Navy. I am a decorated Vietnam-era veteran. I have earned a Master of Business Administration degree in telecommunications management, as well as a Bachelor of Business Administration degree with emphasis in management information systems. Today, I am a retired business professional, civil servant, entrepreneur, and active community member. I recently served my community as a member of the Riverside County Civil Grand Jury. I am excited about the opportunity to serve as a city council member for Murrieta. Being the father of two adult children has reinforced many of the values and virtues I learned while performing my military service to my country and throughout my civilian career. Fatherhood has taught me patience, how to solve complex challenges using creativity and situational awareness while remaining conscientious of maintaining goodwill. As your council member, I intend to build upon the following goals. I will work diligently to support all citizens of Murrieta with encouragement of business development and growth, which will also serve in increasing local employment opportunity. Add it, I intend to ensure that the infrastructure is in place and can support such growth. I will work with city planners to improve the flow of local traffic and reduce traffic congestion, commonly known as choke points, through the use of technological advancement, strategic road design, city mapping, code enforcement, and additional freeways entrance and exit routes.
That's your two minutes. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So we, now we'll have our first question. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the first question. I'm going to go back to the beginning, which would be Ron. Sorry, I got to reference all this. I've got to make sure we stay on, on target. So, and I know some of you may have covered this a little bit in your opening statements, so maybe kind of get a little more in the details of what, what it was that inspired you to run for Murrieta City Council.
Several things inspired me to run. I, I was asked to run by several individuals, but I've always served the city of Murrieta in various different capacities, as I mentioned in my opening statement. I think one of the reasons I was asked is because my level of expertise in, in the financial arena. There's not anyone on council that's going to be able to look at the budget like I do. Not that, that some of the colleagues like Cindy don't have some financial background, but certainly not to the level of expertise that I do. I just want to make Murrieta a great place to live. I've enjoyed it almost my entire life, and I want that for everyone else that, that is a resident in Murrieta.
Thank you. Cindy, I'm sorry, Kristi, Kristi. I'm going to get this down.
Kristi White speaking, yes. Start the timer. First, the people and the caring community inspired me. Next, I was appointed to serve as a city commissioner for almost three years, and during that time, I faithfully attended city council meetings to learn how our government was run and to find out what we were doing, how we were doing in that regard. Thirdly, I was inspired to run for city council when members of the council and the community approached me and asked me to seek office for the 2018 to 22 term, which I did. I ran against three others, and the voters selected me. Fourth, I have the heart of an advocate and want to fight for the very best of all things in our city of Murrieta. Also, I'm inspired because I believe in accountability and transparency from public service, and I deliver these qualities. Lastly, after four years on council and three years as a commissioner, I have skin in the game. We are vibrant. Moving forward, I'm inspired to make things better now and for the generation that follows.
Thank you. Cindy.
Thank you. I was asked to run by several members of the community. After being a traffic commissioner for three years and the chair of the traffic commission, I too have been attending many council meetings these past several years. I've always wanted to serve our community, whichever community I was living in. The time was right. Mayor Scott Vinton was moving, and I had the opportunity to go before our council and ask for their vote of confidence and be selected as the appointee, which they gave me. This city means the world to me. This is where I have my family. This is where my granddaughter is being raised, and I believe everybody deserves to live in a community where it's safe, a great quality of life, and they can have fun. And all of that, I believe that is why I am running, to keep the vision of our past leaders moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jimmy.
Yes. I receive similar inspiration like the other candidates. Initially, I was approached by my neighbors, friends, and my family as well, encouraging me to throw my hat into the running for this particular position because they recognize that I am committed to the city of Murrieta. As I mentioned during my intro, I spent 18 years here, and I've never left because I enjoy this particular city. It's a very progressive and very modest city, and I see all the potentials. I'm quite proud to be in Murrieta, and I hope to serve the habits of this city in the capacity as city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question, we will start with Kristi. What is your vision for the city of Murrieta? And what are your top three priorities?
Well, that's a lot to do in, in a minute, but my quality of life must always be the city of Murrieta's highest and my prior, highest priority. During the last four years on our city council, my voting record reflects my support as a proponent of vibrant quality of life in Murrieta. I love Murrieta. We're a caring community. During my second term as your public servant on city council, my vision for Murrieta is to commit to activities that support what I call the five pillars that determine our quality of life. So see my website for more information on the five pillars. As a former small business owner, my vision is to support Murrieta small businesses, attract key corporations that bring jobs with great wages. My vision is to witness the water and sewer infrastructure improvements that I voted for in October of 2021. And also, my vision is to ensure that we retain our rural and small-town feel. I'd like to explore ideas such as an arts festival, open trade schools, an art center, and efforts to ensure that we're providing diverse opportunities for everyone.
Thank you. Next, Cindy.
Thank you. First and foremost, my vision is to keep our public safety. We are the third safest city in the nation, and we need to make sure that we maintain that and, and get to number one again. Quality of life is extremely important, and we need to make sure that with our public safety, that, that gives us a great quality of life. The other things that is really important to me is that I back our police and fire. They put their lives on the line for us every day, and they are important to make sure that they have the right equipment and everything that they need to do a job to keep them safe and all of our cities and our visitors safe. Traffic is a huge issue, and I look forward to working with fellow colleagues and getting our trash, traffic issue put together with, as a region, so that we solve the plan, that make a plan for the entire region, including Murrieta. The vision that I have is to make sure Murrieta continues to move forward in a positive way, good economics, safety, and also making sure there's a great quality of life.
Thank you. Next, Jimmy.
As I mentioned during my intro, I stated the fact that Murrieta is a very progressive city, and many of the issues today may not be the same issues tomorrow. However, as a candidate, I have the flexibility to adjust accordingly. What I envision for Murrieta is being number one financially sound. In order to do the things that we all want to do in Murrieta and to maintain our high quality of living, we have to make sure that we are properly financed and we're able to fund what needs to be funded within Murrieta. I mentioned traffic earlier, and I will mention it again. Many people have approached me, and there's numerous concerns pertaining to the traffic and the crease, crease in traffic of people driving through the city of Murrieta. Not necessarily that they reside here totally. Taking that into consideration, I discovered from my numerous conversations with others that there's a strong concern pertaining to the actual cost of housing. They like to have affordability associated with single-use housing, and they like to also see things addressed in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ron.
My three priorities would be, of course, public safety is on everyone's mind. We are the third safest city, and I absolutely would want to maintain that, making sure that our police and fire have the right training, equipment, and staffing to make that happen. As evidenced by my endorsement by both the police and fire, they, and they understand that, that I am the person to get that done. We want to keep the, make, make the city friendly. So when you're, the residents are interacting with the, the city of Hall, they don't feel like it's a big bureaucracy that they have to deal with, that they, you know, they come in and they're greeted friendly. Not that we don't have friendly staff and great staff, but just make the process easier for everyone that interacts with the city. And the, the third would be, one of the things I've been looking to the background of is to, to improve the traffic flow throughout the town because we do not control some of the signals at the freeway interchanges. And I like to work with Caltrans to get that into our own control so we can make sure that we control the traffic throughout the city and, and eliminate some congestion.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to start with Cindy on this question. So dealing with all sorts of personalities and constituents can be very challenging, to say the least. What experience do you have in consensus building? Can you give me an example?
In consensus building? Working together as a team, respecting one another's opinion, agree to disagree respectfully, and know what you're talking about. Do your due diligence, stick by your, your goals, your objectives, work together. But know that you're not always going to agree, but when you disagree, do it respectfully.
Could you give an example?
Well, yes. Let's say that there's something coming before the city, and it's a very passionate thing that I want to do, and my colleagues don't want it. I think it's important for me to listen to their point of view, respectfully agree or disagree. But after we leave the dais, we leave as colleagues and not mad at one another and respect each other's opinions.
Very good. Thank you. Next would be Jimmy.
Thank you. In response to that question, I think teamwork is really a key response to that. Simply because teamwork consists of so many different elements that create that one word. We will work together, and we will be able to communicate. As Cindy mentioned, of course, you want to always be courteous and professional. As a consequence of that, you want to also have the responsibility of making informed decisions. So yes, you must do your due diligence, and you must do your research, and therefore you're able to respond in a positive manner to most issues. As a consequence of that, I think that by listening actively, meaning you actually listen to what is being said, that would go a long way to making a cohesive group south of being, working on the, on the city council and being able to distinguish the actual moment of truth that require your attention and your consideration toward others. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
Well, I've had actually over 26 years of consensus building as an investment advisor. I work with a diverse group of people that also help their clients. So when my client comes to me and they want to come up with, whether it's a state plan, a financial plan, whatever it is, I have to work with attorneys. I have to work with accountants. Sometimes I have to work with other family members. And you've got a diverse group that comes together, and they all have different wants and needs, but I have to look out for the needs of my clients. So I'm, I'm very analytical and very data-driven, but I'm also very passionate when it comes to taking care of my clients. So I have to take all these different inputs for, from different people and blend them into a plan that is going to benefit my clients the best. And then I have to also, in a respectful manner, get everybody on board with that, and I've been successful at that for over 26 years.
Thank you. And Kristi.
Thank you. Great question. I have over 30 years' business experience, and from day one, as a customer service manager, I, for a financial services firm, I was a consensus builder. I've worked as a councilperson with police, fire, attorneys, and in my professional life, citizens and students. I think essential is listening and creating win-win scenarios where both sides give a little and lose a little, and that a moderate approach is taken. And as much facilitation and background work that can be done, it really does help people meet in the middle. My best example would be a very important decision that was made in Murrieta while I was on city council with short-term vacation rentals. We were split evenly, and there were many, many citizens that I met with and spoke to, facilitated the understanding of the other side. And once the decision was made by the council, we have had very few complaints and very many resolutions to the problems in the party houses.
Thank you. All right. So Cindy, we're going to start the next question with you. All right. Let me see if I got it up here. Make sure I'm not getting ahead of myself. All right. So we have seen ti, seen times when city council members have shared information with the media or the public directly in the past. Share with us your understanding of how information should be disseminated about the city, especially in trying times, particularly on social media. Actually, I think Cindy is first on this one. No?
Actually, I think I should.
I did get that up. Man, I knew I was going to screw it up at least once. I'm sorry, Jimmy. I'm resetting the clock right now.
It's okay with that.
I'm sorry. I've reset the clock. You're good.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Jimmy.
I'm ready. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. In response to your question, okay. Can you repeat the question again?
Sure.
It's very quick.
Yeah, no problem. Now, I, I threw it all off. This one's on me.
Yeah. That's okay.
So we have seen in times in the past when council members have shared information with the media or the public directly. Share with us your understanding of how information should be disseminated about the city, especially in trying times, particularly on social media.
Okay.
Well, first off, I think that as a council member, I have to be very aware of what I am saying because it's easy to misconstrue when you're using a social media or public media because therefore people do not see you face-to-face. And a lot of time in the communication process, they may not be consciously aware that they have to look at the body language as well as listen to what you are saying to get the full understanding of the impact or what you intend for the words to be received as. I would be very selective in using all the social media, all the public media that are acceptable in this day-to-day. I would not omit a public forum where you would personally present data and information to people as well. I'm very flexible in either category. I would use the most, the advantage of the public as I share information with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
As a council member, you are, you are a part of a team. And whether you agree or disagree with a decision, once the decision is made, it's a council member's job to get on board with that decision and support it. It is the, it is the position then of the city that the council has made. And our job is not to go out on social media and, and badmouth a decision that we weren't happy with. Our job as a council member is to get out there and support whatever that decision may be, even if it's something that we weren't thrilled with. Social media can be a dangerous tool. We do have a public information officer, and, and the message from the council to the public should be unified once a decision is made. At the council meeting, when we're talking about the, the issue and, and trying to decide what's best for the city, that's the time for the debate. Once the decision is made, we all have to get on board with it and support it and move forward as a unified council for the best of the city.
Thank you. Kristi.
Where this typically goes south is when a decision hasn't been made and a council member or two decide to essentially go rogue and give public information statements out in public at an emergency operations center or via social media. So when a council member doesn't even know what this decision or is not following the chain of command or is not following confidentiality, those decisions weaken the council, especially at a critical moment. They also are very divisive when a council member speaks out, when they are speaking so without the authority to speak to the public or to publish something on social media. And it causes a great deal of confusion and internal chaos for our internal staff, our executives at City Hall. And following the chain of command and using our public information officer is the ideal way to go, whether a decision has been made or is yet to be made.
Thank you. And Cindy.
Yes. It is very important that the council is unified, whether they agreed on a topic or they didn't, whether it voted their way or it didn't. The message must be the same. In emergency situations and forgetting the message out, I am not one to love social media to go rogue. I think our public information officer, that is her responsibility. The message should be, should be the same. And if asked to give a comment or a quote, I would say whatever our alignment is as a council and whatever the decision we have made, we stick to it, and we let our public information officer get the word out, and all we do is back her and allow her to do her job.
Great. Thank you. All right. So let's see if I get this right. So we, Jimmy was then, so now it's, Ron is back to it. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that. All right, Ron. One important task for city council members is to work closely with the city manager. How would you? How would you assess the performance of the city manager? And if you could elaborate on that a little bit for us?
Sure, I've, I've only met Kim a few times. Um, I've been impressed um, with those meetings so far. I am aware of her actions um, since the previous uh, city manager has left. And she is a vast improvement over the previous city manager. Um, things that, that I can't share publicly that uh, I'm aware of. Um, she's taken steps to make them better. Um, the accounting department has improved vastly under her supervision along with uh, Javier's. Um, which is, which is really the, the lifeblood of the city. If you don't know where the money is coming to and going from, city's got a big problem. And so I, I, with my financial background, I think that's one of the, the most important things that the city manager must keep their, their awareness of. And I, I think she does a good job with that. Um, not that there isn't room for improvement with some expertise, but um, overall thinks she's doing a good job.
Thank you. Christie.
Yes, to answer your question specifically, I would say that our city manager is doing an exemplary job. Her past performance evaluation by council have been exemplary and I've been through four evaluation periods annually with her. I think she excels in hiring new talent that has brought so much to the city of Marietta. We needed to shore up our executive team. She accomplished that. She's worked on succession planning. She's successfully planned for our future and to safeguard our institutional knowledge. She oversees police and fire, which is not only is she running the staff at city hall, but she oversees. Police and fire. That can't be understated, the immensity of the responsibilities. With a municipality that has our own police and fire. So Kim Summers is doing an outstanding job. I think the city should safeguard her as a talent and that we should work closely as a council with our city manager.
Thank you. Cindy.
As a new council member back in December, I had a lot to learn and I'm still learning every day. I have relied on our city manager and her staff to help me maneuver and through the, through the mounds of paperwork. And understanding everything. She has been a huge asset to me as a new council member. I have enjoyed learning how all the different departments work. She never, ever does not ever answer her phone. I mean, she always answers her phone. She always is there to tell me um, the staff's point of view and gives me information and lets me know where I need to look up stuff if I need to. I think she is a huge asset to our community and I back her one hundred percent. I enjoy working with her. She's a great leader and it's an honor to be on sta- on the city council um, and be a part of her team.
Thank you. And Jimmy.
Yes, I've had an opportunity to get to know Kim Summers. I've interacted with her on a personal level as well as professional level. And I've always been impressed with her professionalism and the way she makes decisions. And generally are always informed decisions. She appeared to be a very good communicator. And she's willing to not just speak and share information, but to listen and receive information as well. I think she has a very good judge of character. Many of the executives I've had an opportunity to meet and get to know. I realized that she has selected them or recommended them for the position they're holding. So as a result of that, I am really impressed with her. I think she's an asset to this city and she should be committed for doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, I get this right, Christie should be up next. There we go. All right. Uh, what in your opinion will be the greatest challenges the city will face in the next five years?
Did you say one greatest challenge? Or the greatest challenges?
Yeah, what in your opinion, what, what will be the greatest challenges?
Okay. I think the first challenge is that we need to develop sustainable economic. And a sustainable economic engine that's going to help us drive and provide significant reef um, revenues. As we continue to grow, our police and fire need to be able to afford to hire competitive. Um, and pay competitive wages. And we have another number of other things such as we're moving out of, uh, running out of space at city hall. So being able to pay our way, that's going to be one. Another challenge is providing high-quality water and wastewater services for all of Marietta. And another thing is to fight Sacramento on unfunded, unfunded mandates. Um, that the state and the federal government is pushing down on Marietta as a municipality and requiring us to comply with. Without giving us the funds. So um, money and infrastructure, water and sewer in particular would be the biggest challenges I see.
Thank you. Cindy.
Well, I believe one of our biggest challenges is traffic. It's like I said earlier, it's not just a city problem, it's a regional problem. And I do believe that we need to work with our regional partners here in, in Southwest Riverside County to find a real plan for a real solution. I also believe that the water and sewer is a big situation that every citizen should have. And I'd like to see us make sure that that does happen. There's also a public safety. With the governor and uh, the letting out all of these um, people out of prison early, it has brought crime limits up in other cities. Our police and fire have done an excellent job keeping us safe, but we need more tools and local control. We need to get our local control back. We know what's right for our city. The state does not. We need local control. I believe that with the foresight of our council members and our past leaders, we are going forward in the right direction. But we are, our hands are tied in Mary, in many areas and we need our hands untied so that we can move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy.
Okay. There's several major challenges that I can actually respond to on this particular question. But one of the first that comes to my mind would have to be the revenue generation aspect. We have many issues that need to be addressed and most of them, if not all. Basically go down to the availability of financial resources. We need to ensure that we have a strong business base. We have a strong development for homes and apartments or whatever. So we're able to generate the necessary revenue to take care of the police department, fire services. All the various services working with the special districts. Because once again, they will be looking at the city of Marietta to see what we bring to the table. And again, that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Ron.
One of the biggest challenges facing Marietta is our executive team that's currently at city hall. Um, which are some of the best in what they do are getting to retirement age. We're going to lose several key employees over the next few years. And it's going to be crucial that we bring in equal talent to replace them. Um, it can change the whole culture of city hall and how services are provided. If we don't have those right key people in place. So I think that's one of the, one of the major challenges. Another one for our um, public safety is our fire department budget is, is, has a structural deficit of a million dollars a year. Now, it's funded through discretionary funds, but it, it's a structural deficit that shouldn't be there. And we need to account for that and have it in the budget every year so that the fire department doesn't have to wonder if. This year because of a recession that it's going to not have discretionary funds to backfill it. And obviously the, the city manager is a huge key in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Cindy.
Yes.
You're up next. Uh, Marietta has a very large and growing healthcare ecosystem. Prop ten, twenty-nine, which would require onsite licensed medical professionals at uh. Uh, kidney dialysis centers. What are your thoughts on this issue and its impact to business?
My thoughts on this issue is my aunt used to run a dialysis unit for over twenty-five years. She's a regis- was a registered nurse and they helped people get their blood dialyzed every day. They did not need a doctor on staff to do their jobs. They were saving lives. When you're in a doctor's office or a clinic and if you get an emergency situation, they call nine-one-one. They don't call a doctor. I believe that this will hurt business and most of all, it's going to hurt the patients they serve. They need this and they need to be able to get service and they don't need a doctor there to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy.
Now, my understanding of proposition twenty-nine, it can be a doctor, nurse or some major healthcare professional. That's there to support in the case of an accident or an emergency of any incident other than the norm. I'm wholehearted in support simply because I would not want to be responsible for such an incident to occur. That may eventually cause someone to lose their life. I would feel responsible for that. Therefore, as a result, I would prefer to have a nurse, a qualified nurse, a doctor. Of whomever the professional may be available and on site to ensure the safety of all people utilizing that facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
The dialysis centers already have qualified personnel onsite. Um, they do have qualified nurses. The proposition says that they need to have a doctor onsite. If you have a problem in a doctor's office, that doctor is not going to be your, your emergency medical doctor. He is going to call nine-one-one and the nurses and the doctors that are in the office are going to do what they can. But they're going to call nine-one-one and get you the help that you need. Um, the, if you look at the source of proposition twenty-nine, it's not the patients. It's not the patients asking for having somebody qualified there. And we've had decades of patients go into these facilities and they're not the ones complaining. So you got to look at the source and figure out what the real reason is behind proposition twenty-nine. I would not support it.
Thank you. And Christie.
I vote no and recommend voting no on proposition twenty-nine that places the numerous restrictions on dialysis. Clinics, including the requirement that a doctor, nurse, practitioner, or nurse assistant be on site during treatment hours. I'm pro-business. I'm pro-small business. I'm pro corporate business and I'm pro um. Local control. I think twenty-nine will hurt businesses and actually will worsen. And, and the conversations I've had with our, our businesses in the medical corridor. Will hurt our healthcare worker shortage dramatically. And will lead to overcrowding in our emergency rooms that already are suffering. So I'm no on twenty-nine.
Thank you. All right, Jimmy, you're up first here.
Okay.
I'll try not, I'll try not to screw this one up. All right, so do you favor keeping the current city council election by district format? Or would you prefer returning to a citywide city council elections? Um, would you be in favor of asking Marietta residents to vote on a referendum on this issue?
Actually, to be frank with you, I have no firm opinion either way in that particular area. The thing that would be of more importance to me would be the quality of the candidates that are trying to run for the position. Uh, district such as we're in now is fine for me. I am running as a district candidate. However, I don't consider just the district five to be my responsibility, but the entire city of Marietta, my entire responsibility. That goes back to why I said it has to do with the quality of the candidates. The perception that they have of what their requirements and duties will be if they are elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
Districts have their, have their pros and cons. There, there are advantages and disadvantages to, to districts and I'm, I'm not going to go into all the details of that. Um, we currently have a district system. Um, if you get the right people elected. The, the candidate or the council member is going to look at their district first, but they're going to do what's in the best interest of the whole city of Marietta. Um, Marietta has got some really unique areas. And so while districts have their downside, if you have a, a city like Marietta that has a rural side and. And a medical center part and a heavily residential part, I can see how districts can, can be a benefit. Cause not everybody can get up to speed in all those different areas all the time. And having a, a smaller area where you can get face to face with the residents and hear what they have to say can be beneficial. But again, it has to be approached the right way. So I, I don't, I wouldn't favor one way or the other. If the residents wanted to be at large, I'd be, I'd be fine with that. And if the residents wanted to keep it as districts, I'd be fine with that too. I'm going to do what's in the best interest of Marietta regardless.
Thank you. Christie.
Yes, that's a great question. I talk to people about that fairly frequently. And it's still a concern to many of the people that I speak with in Marietta. They recall that we were trying to avoid a multimillion dollar lawsuit. By attorney Kevin Shankman and we, we didn't want to waste taxpayer dollars, so the city council decided to move to districts. What I feel is that all council members should represent all of Marietta and they should know all parts of Marietta. I think that the larger candidate pool is very important and brings out a, a healthy level of competition. Rather than having a narrow pool by five districts and. I have one council person that has told me that they like just reporting to twenty thousand people instead of a hundred and fifteen thousand people. And I would rather respond and report and be accountable and transparent to all of Marietta. Than just a, a niche slice in a small district. I think that serves Marietta's interests better.
Thank you. All right, Cindy, you're up. Okay.
Did you want me to answer the question?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Um. Pros and cons, the districts uh, does give a representative for the constituents to go to. Regarding items in their district. And that has been a plus for me. It has allowed me to get to know the residents in my district on a name-to-name basis, which has been really wonderful. However, I, I always do believe that my job is to represent the city as a whole, not just district five. And to do my due diligence to do what's right for the city at large, not just for district five. But district five is a wonderful district with wonderful citizens and representing them is an honor. And I do believe that getting to know the other districts and all their needs and wants is just as important. So I do believe that if the citizens want a referendum, then they should have one. If they don't want one, then I do believe we should keep our districts. We were forced into this and I think it has been good in some points and it has been detrimental in others, but I represent the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ron, you're up next.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, the triangle development has been discussed for many years. As to what project would be the best fit for the city and its residents. What are your thoughts on what would be the best fit for this valuable development for the city Marietta and the region?
Yeah, the golden triangle is, has been discussed ever since I've been involved with the city back in the early nineties. Um, it was supposed to be a regional mall in the beginning. Um, and then Temecula had some, some quick meetings and convinced the developer back then to move to Temecula. And they were proactive and made it happen. Um, that's kind of on our, our council back then. Not being as proactive and, and quick to act as they were. Um, and a lot of projects have been proposed for that area. Uh, one of the disastrous ones was Rogersdale. Which would included public money and some other stuff that uh, would not have been great. Um, the key is though, it's, it's private property. And, and while I may have a vision of, of restaurants and entertainment venues and other stuff that would be great to go in there. It's up to the private property owner what they want to develop. So it's our job as council members to zone it. And then within that zoning, let the private property owner develop it that complies with that.
Thank you. Christie.
Yes, the best use for the triangle property is indeed what the private family's wishes are. And what their desires are. We await their decision. There's been a number of things that have been proposed and that in the twenty years that I've lived in Marietta and been involved in the Marietta Valley area. The city's not holding it up. We await the decision of the private families and encourage them. I know that our city manager and assistant city manager meet with the representatives of the family every month is my understanding. And we need to get this moving forward. I've heard talk recently about a hospital group coming in and that location being prime, um, a little. a little adjacent to our hospital corridor, but nevertheless good freeway access. And the most important thing that comes right after the family's wishes is developing that property for the benefit of Marietta. That's a prime piece of real estate and everyone has a vested interest in moving that project forward and desires it.
Thank you. Cindy.
Well, the bottom line is it is private property. And as long as they stay within the zoning of that property, then I do believe that is their right to develop it as they choose. As a city council member, it is our responsibility to make sure it is zoned for the proper balance and development of the triangle. It is a beautiful piece of property and it's one of the largest left in all of Riverside, Southwest Riverside County. I have high hopes that it's going to be developed, developed well. So that all of our Mariettians and our visitors will enjoy it. I do believe that this needs to be brought forward. We need to see it moving because dirt just doesn't look as nice as beautiful buildings and beautiful amenities for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy.
Over the years, I've heard many proposals for that particular property and it is a very key location. And as one of the previous speakers has mentioned, it is privately owned. I think going along with the idea of proper zoning from the city council will play a large part in what they may eventually decide to have developed at that location, at that site. I would hope that it would be something that the city of Marietta will be able to take advantage of and the citizens are able to enjoy and we all can profit by. Therefore, it would be a hard thing to take further than where we are now simply because it is privately owned. And we have to respect that as a, as a major factor in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next one, Christie. All right. What are your thoughts and or concerns regarding the speed of processing development applications at the city right now?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure. So what are your thoughts and or concerns regarding the speed of processing development applications with the city right now?
I think there's always room for improvement. I think that after COVID, we started doing, or during COVID, we started implementing a number of things that actually sped up our processes. We have identified some new software and we're currently in the process of automating and implementing that software to add more speed. So I think speed can always be something that brings value and helps roll out the red carpet and reduce red tape. So I'm always for process improvements and I'm hearing from our developers that they're very satisfied and have felt that the city has acted in a proactive way and is responsive. I'm not hearing, as I did several years ago, of delays and concerns and frustrations from our developers and applicants. So I think we always can improve, but I think that we are on the right track and I think we have the right staff. I think council is anticipating an update as to the progress that's been made. We have a fairly new director and I think that things are moving in the right direction for Marietta and our developers and applicants.
Thank you. Cindy.
COVID really did put a strain on our city staff. I do believe that streamlining the process is extremely important. Delaying projects because we can't get to it, be lack of staff or a lack of information is very detrimental to those that are wanting to move and progress our city. The new software that we are testing out looks very promising and I think that's going to go a long ways to streamlining developments and plans. And I do believe that we are the first red carpet that a lot of citizens see. And we need to be at our utmost every time they come in, answer all their questions. But most of all, keep the streamlining fast, but complete. And get their jobs into production as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy.
As a, I was the ex-assistant chief information officer for the county of San Bernardino. And I know from that experience that whenever IT or any developer for that matter is trying to put a new application out, they want to meet the customer's expectations. But by the same token, I've recognized you have to make sure that benchmarks are being met and they are being tested to ensure that what you're asking for is what you receive. I am led to believe that with the new director they have now, that they have implemented procedures that would facilitate the overall development process and ensure that what individuals are requesting are actually what they are receiving. And I think that's a very good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
The development process is complicated enough with all the, the requirements you have to go through that having delays that are imposed by different factors in the city can be very frustrating for a developer. I know there's no city that's perfect. Marietta certainly has its areas that need to be improved. I've talked to real estate agents that I work with and they've told me anecdotally that there are people that have bought land in Marietta, tried to submit a plan to build a house, got so frustrated with the process, they turned around and sold the land and moved to, moved, bought land in another, another town so that they could develop. Those problems have gotten slightly better. Of course, now we're rolling out electronic plan submittals, which is going to be a learning curve. I, I personally submitted plans last week and got an email saying it's going to be several weeks before they can answer the email. Because it's, it's a new process. So there are going to be growing pains they have to deal with. So hopefully, once we get through those growing pains, that that process will improve. But it's utmost that we have super efficient development processing.
Thank you. All right. Cindy, you're up next, right? Did I get this right? Okay, thank you. All right, Cindy. This will be our last question before we get to our closing statements. So, and, and this is going to be a little different because we've got two city council members and two council candidates running for council who have not sat there. So for those of you, those two of you who are sitting, what, it's, this is all about policy, right? What initiatives have you brought forward that you, you brought forward to the council for consensus and to get acted on? For those two candidates who have not, what are two, you know, what is a initiative that you're looking to bring forward?
Well, as a new council member, I can honestly say I have not brought in initiative forward. But I do plan on bringing some initiative forward on traffic and also on the, the in our parks. I, I do believe that traffic is a huge issue and I think we need to work together with our regional partners and cities to get this problem resolved on a real, real solution, not just pie in the sky. And our parks need to be safe for all of our residents and visitors. It's very important that children can play without worrying about getting hurt and their parents worrying about them getting hurt. So I'd like to bring some initiatives forward to improve our parks and improve our traffic. That is my goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy.
Yes, as a candidate, I will definitely be very interested in putting forth an issue pertaining to addressing the traffic that we are currently undergoing in the city of Marietta as it grows. In conjunction with that, the initiative will also, another initiative of the same importance to me will look at the affordability and availability of single use and housing. Those two issues have been shared with me from numerous people and those are major concerns that they have. And I fully intend, if I am elected, to address those issues and make them come to the forefront of many, many meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
One of the policies I would bring forward as a council member is, is Marietta is the third safest city. Public safety is number one here. Residents I've been speaking with, that's one of the reasons they moved to this town. And, and we have to maintain that. And when you have a department that has a structural deficit of a million dollars a year, not that it's not being funded, but it's not a line item on the budget. And I think that needs to be the same par as the police department. Police department has a line item budget. The fire department needs to have a line item budget. We need to make sure that they can count on that funding. And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a question that we're going to fund our fire department every year or not.
Thank you. And Christie.
Yes, due to COVID and staff, reduced staff levels, I did not put an initiative forward in the last periods. But I have three moving forward upon reelection that I will do. The first is to ensure that stormwater drainage issues are initiated and pursued for all of Marietta. We've been kicking that can forward for many, many city council tenures and we can no longer do that. Secondly, I mentioned this before, we need a sustainable economic engine that provides funding, significant public funds to cover revenues that we need and to have police and fire get the money that they need to pay competitive wages and for equipment and training to keep us one of the safest cities. And lastly, I want to address issues about sober living homes. The state lets sober living homes move into our residential areas without having a license. And I've had a number of residents and constituents approach me about this issue. And I'm going to advocate that we work with legislators to solve that problem for the protection and the quality of life that we deserve for our residents here in Marietta.
Thank you. Well, thank you, candidates all for answering all of my questions. So now we'll have each give a closing statement. You each have one minute. And Jimmy, we will start with you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the Marietta, Wintamar Chamber of Commerce for having this particular forum. I think it's a very valuable platform that everyone get an opportunity to come in and observe and hear what each other candidates or the actual council member themselves feel about certain important issues and topic. It was a honor to speak to you today and to get an opportunity for my voice to be heard. Whereas I'm sharing the issues and concerns as well as my own personal observation. And I'm sure they will be addressed to improve, not just to maintain the high standard of living we enjoy today, but in the future as well. As a council member of the Marietta City Council, if elected, I would always be an advocate for the betterment of our city. My lifelong experiences has given me the skill necessary to make informed decisions on behalf of our citizens. I promise to work diligently to support all citizens of Marietta by supporting safety, health, business, infrastructure, traffic, public utilities, and the list continues. Once again, I have dedicated my life to providing quality service to all. And today I am eager to take the next step. Your votes and support are needed and greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Cindy.
My goal as a public servant is to serve at the best of my ability with integrity, honor, and character. I am proudly endorsed by Marietta Police Officers Association and a Marietta Firefighters Association. Serving the Marietta citizens is an honor and privilege and I want to continue to serve for the next four years. I want to thank the Marietta Wintamar Chamber of Commerce for this wonderful forum tonight and for everyone that took the time out of their evenings to listen to all of us. I am humbly and respectfully asking for your vote on November the 8th, Cindy Warren for Marietta City Council District Five. Thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you. Christie.
Thank you for evaluating me, Christie White, as your reelected public servant in November. If you have any questions after this forum, please call me at 951-294-0809. My record of helping citizens is a long list. Look at my list of endorsers and supporters who tell their stories on my website. You should know from the recommendations of others that I love Marietta and I care about our children, families, seniors, veterans, and our businesses. The record of accomplishments during the last four years is also long. No one accomplishes anything on behalf of Marietta by acting alone. It truly takes lots of elbow grease and collaboration. In summary, during the last four years, we have consistently been a top 10 safest city. A city where access to healthcare right here in our own backyard has increased substantially. Job creation is among the best in Riverside County. Our budget is in the black despite COVID. $3 million was allocated for water and wastewater infrastructure and Costco. And the $50 million sale of the Marietta Hot Springs Resort will add needed revenues. Thank you for your consideration. I'm Christie White from Marietta District Two.
Thank you. And Ron.
If you look at my qualifications, my longevity here in the city, the decades of financial experience, my service to the city, I think you'll find that, that it's uncompared in, in of the candidates. I've, I have a record of service already. I am a veteran. I have served the country and, and enjoy service in general. So I'd be honored to earn your vote for November 8th, Ron Holliday for District Two. And if you don't want to take my word for it, you can look at all those that have endorsed me, including State Senator Melissa Melendez, State Assemblyman Kelly Ciardo, District Attorney Mike Hestron, Sheriff Chad Bianco, all of the, the majority of the current city council and countless others that have known me for decades and know what I can bring to the council. Appreciate the chamber for hosting this and thank you for watching.
Thank you. I want to thank you all again for participating tonight. We really appreciate it. It's, it's so important that we get the information out to everyone so that they know who is running for, for these different positions. I want to thank everyone who tuned in tonight and those who'll be watching this over the next few weeks leading up to election day. Please make sure you get out and vote. It is the most important thing that you can do to have an impact on our everyday lives. Please make sure that you get educated regarding all of the issues on the ballot this year. The Marietta Wintamar Chamber of Commerce has taken positions on several ballot initiatives this year. Heather is going to pop those up on the screen here in just a second. And just want to make sure you guys can all. I'm right here still. Ah, just kidding. But make sure you guys pay attention, do your research. This is where we stand on certain issues that are all, that will affect business in, in one way, shape, or form. So thank you again for all tuning in. Please get educated and thank you again to candidates who are running. We appreciate this so much. Everyone have a great night.